All right, mics on. Okay, it's seven o'clock by my watch, so why don't we go ahead and get started? We'll call to order a regular meeting of the Planning Commission for the Town of Superior. Can we have the roll call, please?
Sure. Chairperson Jim Sawtell.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Robert Momarts. Commissioner Sol Sarden here. Bob McCool.
Here.
Jerry Melia.
Here.
Jason Reese. Lisa Ritchie. Anthony Stewart.
Here.
Steve Whitty.
Here.
Attorney Hillary Graham. Planner Stephen Williams.
Here.
All right, thanks, fellas. First item on the agenda is the public comment on the consent agenda or non-agenda items. I know we have members of the public who want to be heard on an issue that we'll be taking action on later, but if you want, we can wait, defer until then. But if you'd like to speak now on the consent agenda or non-agenda, you can do that, too.
Hi. I'm happy to be part of the dialogue regarding this specific agenda. That's all right.
Yeah, that would be fine. That'd be fine. Next item is the consent agenda in the minutes of the April 18, 2017, meeting. Did everybody get a chance to take a look at those? Anyone have any changes?
Just a couple of comments. Let's see, on page four, this is more just a subtle difference in how it was written than what, well, at least what I meant, anyway. I'm not sure that I was quoted here, but the talk about focusing on multimodal movements in and out of the marketplace. Town Center Louisville and other regional draws with a goal to separate regional traffic from residential traffic. And that's a, it wasn't so much regional traffic as it is commercial and marketplace traffic, right? You know, because that could be residential traffic going to the marketplace, right? So that was one. So it's very subtle. And then, let's see, I had one other place I think highlighted here. Sorry. I thought, I'm out of, it's back, oh, here we go. Okay, there's that. I thought I had two highlights here, but maybe I didn't. If I find it, I'll mention it to you. I think we're, it was another just a subtlety, but I'm not seeing it, so that's good.
So, subject to that revision, Bob, that you've made, any other comments or changes to the minutes?
No.
Could we have a motion to approve with, subject to that change?
I'll move to approve.
Commissioner Momarts?
Mr. Cool?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried. Okay, the next item is, I think, the reason we're here tonight, which is the public hearing and adoption of a resolution recommending approval of Discovery Office Park Superior Town Center replat number two and Superior Town Center filing 1B replat number four, creating tract H Superior Town Center and recommending approval of a final development plan for irrigation, landscape, and trail improvements on tract H. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Has there been publication of notice?
Yes, I haven't.
Thank you. Does staff care to make any presentation?
Yeah. Good evening, Stephen Williams Town staff. I'm here tonight, and so is our Parks and Recreation Open Space Director, Patrick Hammer, as well as consultant from Larson Associates, Anthony Pratt. That'll all be here to answer questions. I'm going to start with a brief overview of the kind of the application components and the plating aspects of this plat, and then I'll turn it over to Patrick to discuss the overall landscaping plan. The illustration here above reflects the location of tract H within the town center. You can see it's on the southern portion of the town center. It also kind of reflects generally where it's at within Superior and that it borders Rock Creek to the south. The subdivision overlay shown here, we'll pull the screen up a little bigger, is from PD number three, and it reflects also having, generally having, an open space area between these two planned developments, Rock Creek Ranch to the south and the town center to the north. That has always been a part of the town center design, not just in the latest iteration, which is PD number three. As I mentioned, this application includes two replat applications as well as a final development plan for landscaping and irrigation. The FDP also includes options for an east-west trail within the northern segment of tract H. This illustration is from the FDP document. It illustrates the entire 15.73 acres of tract H, which is 225 feet in width and is bounded by the Discovery Office Park subdivision on the west and the US 36 Highway on the east. The proposal requires two replat applications because the area that we're talking about, tract H, is currently split between two individual plats that are reflected, the cover sheets are reflected here. So Discovery Office Park and the Superior Town Center, or the southwest portion of the Superior Town Center, were merged when we did a final development plan to connect Discovery Office Parkway to the town center. So there's a portion of this southern boundary that's within this joint plat, and then the most southeastern portion is still within the filing 1 replat B, which is on the bottom right. The parameters of the Discovery Office Park plat are shown here in Hatch, and then the other parameters for replat B or filing 1B are shown on the right. Staff has requested that each of these subdivision plats remain whole, so what you're seeing on the plats are the exact same plats that we had the first go around, except now we're creating tract H within both of them. And then, as far as the Discovery Office Park Town Center replat, we're also creating a 30-foot-wide irrigation easement that extends both across tract H, which is highlighted in red or shaded in red on each plat sheet that you're going to be seeing in the next few slides, and across, this is tract A within, so this is actually the Marshall Road right away, or McCaslin Boulevard right away, excuse me. So McCaslin is where we're going to tap in for the irrigation and extend it across tract H, or tract A, excuse me. Tract A is already under the town's ownership. It was dedicated through a prior plat for Discovery Office Park, and then it connects to tract H, which starts further to the east. So Sheet 3 and Sheet 4 of the first plat we're talking about, the combined plat, illustrate the area within tract H that's being created. And that effectively shrinks Superlot 4A and Superlot 4B, so they decrease in size by the amounts reflected in the table, and resulting, we get 6.85 acres of the overall 15.73 acre site, or tract, is within this subdivision. And then, within the adjacent subdivision to the east, tract A encompasses 8.8 acres. And this is being carved out of what was Superlot 5. So Superlot 5 is decreasing from 32.03 acres to 23.15 acres. And this is the only thing that's being accomplished through this second plat. The first plat for filing, for the joint one, is creating an easement and creating the tract, and the second plat is simply creating tract H in this area. That may be all I have, so if you have any questions on that aspect of it, I'm happy to answer it, but I'll turn it over to Patrick Hammer to kind of go over the history of the design and the nuances of the landscaping and irrigation design.
Maybe we can hold off on questions until we hear from Patrick.
Yeah.
I can help you out.
Patrick Hammer, Town staff. I also have Anthony Pratt with Larson Associates, who was landscape architect on this project. Maybe a little bit different than the last time I came and talked to you guys about what is now Wildflower Park. This is a little bit more of an open space design, which was, I'll often admit, was kind of a first for us. We had a couple of unique, I won't even say challenges. The unique aspect about this project was you had two development areas, one being the future town center and the existing area of Rock Creek. Staff was tasked early on from the board with restoring that landscape to as much of the pre-development aesthetic as possible, but also provide an appropriate amount of visual screening between the two developments, at the same time, not do too much visual screening to where you would potentially impact views negatively in the future. So with Anthony's help and several kind of walks out in the field, we generally came up with this open space concept, and if you're kind of familiar with the south side of Colton Road, maybe along, in between Indiana and Rock Creek Circle, we've got kind of the clumped grass materials, you've got sections of open, you've got stands of trees followed by sections of open, and it does provide kind of a visually appealing landscape that helps to buffer two areas from each other. That really was kind of the gist overall of what we were wanting to accomplish. Anthony and I both spent time together actually walking behind the houses in the area, kind of standing back what we would assume would be kind of a residential view, and really kind of strategically placing clumps of growth. You know, we do have some unique drainage areas in here, but again, being very cognizant of how do you create an open space that doesn't overdo it, that looks too manicured and too out of place, inconsistent with what you would see in town or in the rest of Boulder County, but also accomplish this goal of providing a nice area that separated what are really two different neighborhoods. So that was really kind of the gist of what we were hoping to accomplish. It's not overly flashy. The grass mix, the base ground cover would be what we call the town's irrigated Rock Creek native seed mix. It would be irrigated, so it would look probably a little bit different than the type of grass that's out there now. What you see out there now is kind of a taller blond, sometimes a reddish-brown grass that doesn't get mowed. It's generally kind of just out there. This would be a little bit more typical to what you see in other areas of Rock Creek where it's got a twinge of green to it. It could be, and more than likely would be, mowed on occasion, nothing more than maybe once a month. It would be irrigated to keep it alive and going, but it wouldn't be over-irrigated. So that's really kind of the gist of the plan. We can kind of flip through some of the individual sheets, but are there any questions kind of to this point?
We'll just, we'll handle questions from the audience in a moment, but right now, are there any commissioners who have any questions?
At this point.
Patrick, you'll probably get to this, but one thing I'll be interested in finding out is where this trail goes here.
Sure. Sure, and actually, let me kind of flip, it's a little bit difficult to see. I don't know if I've got the pointer up here or not. Right now, I'm the far northern edge of the parcel. We have an eight-foot-wide concrete trail. It's currently sitting, as it's shown here, on top of a drainage area. This drainage takes on a good portion of the drainage here from Rock Creek, some of the drainage from what we call the Discovery property, and kind of conveys that water generally this way. The pipe, or the trail here at the far northern edge would require that drainage to eventually be piped. We were recently asked to kind of show also a meandering. Let me see if we've got...
I think it's a separate PDF.
Yeah. Thanks, Stephen.
It may not be up yet, but it's in the files if you go over to the P drive. So go to Final Documents, and then top.
Yep. Is that it?
Yeah.
Okay, and I do apologize, the graphic isn't the best, but we'll, I'll kind of walk you through the explanation. So, a couple of different trail options. One, reverting back to that previous sheet, if you base your... Thanks, Bill. If you kind of generally follow the dotted line here, that's that very far northern edge. So, a trail option there, put in a pipe to convey the drainage, do an eight-foot-wide concrete trail on top of this, far northern edge. And the parcel's a little bit unique, and I might ask Stephen if it's all right if I kind of maybe do try to show that drone footage.
Sure.
We did have a drone come out and fly, just because it is kind of a hard thing to wrap your head around. And I'll probably just pause it in a couple of areas just to kind of explain a little bit on the trail location. So you could see that here on the hillside, this is that drainage area that I was referring to. So, a trail option here, pipe underground, put a trail on top of the pipe. You've got, I don't know, Anthony, maybe 12 to...
Eight to 10.
Eight to 10 feet of rise here. Or you can have a trail alignment right at the very toe, a little bit of a kind of meandering trail. Flip back over. They would sit right on the crest of this hill. So there's the kind of eight to 10 feet of elevation change, so trail option here, or a trail option here. Both with the attempt to get that trail as far north as possible. You just do have the two likely, likelihoods, one, kind of a straight shot with drainage underneath, or another option that is a little bit elevated that kind of meanders through the parcel.
That second PowerPoint also has those images of the landscaping, like when it's grown, if you want to show that.
Sure. This presentation here was actually from the early presentations that we showed the town's advisory committees. These are images of the current, a couple of the current open space areas in town. Tract H, as it sits now, you could see that's kind of that blondish-red grass material that I was referring to. And then, a couple of areas, it's a little bit more manicured, that does have an establishment irrigation system. And then, the difference between an irrigated and not mowed, maybe only mowed once a year, irrigated, mowed, and, for the most part, treated like sod. We'll do fertilizer in this area. Overwatering, I mean, we actually have a particular watering cycle here that hits this frequently, just to kind of keep that consistent on Colton Road. This area down here probably only gets a big broadcast maybe once a week. We shut these areas off in the rainy season as well. It's nice to have that flexibility. So there's kind of the varying types of open space. This plan is showing the seed mix probably closer to these two. And then, just a couple more kind of open space images. I mean, ideally, and these are images that we actually used on the Wildflower Park, creating those pockets where you could, you can kind of have the two manicured worlds operate together. You can have some open space, you can have a trail. You know, it wouldn't look overly manicured, but at the same time, it's not so rough that it looks unkept. Again, just kind of some shots of the town's existing open space. So any additional questions?
I've got one question. The, why is it concrete versus maybe a crushed gravel trail? Is there a reason for that?
Yeah, a couple. One, I think over the last several years, we've heard from the board that concrete is the preference on trails. In terms of a maintenance, our staff has been asked more often than not to keep the trails plowed, and our scope of which trails we maintain kind of grows year by year. Knowing that this at some point would be probably a pretty popular trail, it would need to be plowed in the winter, we go with the eight-foot. That way, our guys in the Rangers or the Colorado trucks can just get to them, where sometimes you see the orange Kubota kind of scooting around with the Vargas guys. But we, you know, to your point, a crusher-fine trail could work in this area, it just hasn't been the preference of the board on the last handful of projects. Is that drone fly the entire length? Sure. Would you like to...
Can we go all the way from the beginning?
Absolutely.
Drew, I'd like, and could you communicate the sightline of the backyards as it's kind of flying down? I'm just kind of curious.
Yeah, and I...
Like, if you're in, there are places that looks like it might be level, and like here, obviously, it looks like it'd be as low as 20, 30 feet below.
And at any point, if you guys wanted to say, hey, stop, you know, let me know. This is an unedited.
Sure.
We did have one where we tried for OSAC and Prostack where we put some images in just to really get their heads wrapped around it, but this is kind of the raw and uncut.
Okay, and so at this point here, if you pause, are we...
Yep.
We're probably what? So you're flying right over where the far northern straight edge trail would be roughly, very roughly.
Yeah, kind of.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I would say that we're, if you kind of generally, here's a good reference point. These cutouts here, and these are our two drone pilots, they're kind of standing...
On that, roughly, inside the line a little bit, maybe?
Yeah, inside the line.
So, at this point, the homes to the south, right, yeah, would they be, are we 10, 15 feet below their sightline at this point? Or are we more level with the...
We're probably, at this point, maybe 20 feet above.
Where the drone is? So you're above the sightline?
We're above the sightline.
Okay, so then, as we continue, it looks like we drop below the sightline.
Yep, and all...
And where are we at this point, thinking about, what have we got there, Pittkin, Wiggins, where this, we were just at Pittkin there, I guess, and then...
Boy, we've got to be, let me kind of flip back over to a map reference here.
Go to the, my PowerPoint's, the first page adds that kind of context if you want.
Yeah, the one that shows those neighborhoods.
Yeah.
There we go.
There you go.
We, at that point, we're probably flying right in this area.
Okay, so we have a quite...
Beeline, yep.
Okay, so we're just fitting, is that Pittkin right there?
Yeah.
And what's the next one is?
Carville.
Carville.
That's Carville, and then we've got, okay.
Wiggins.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
Yeah.
And so at that point, we're actually, the trail is sitting above the sightline of the backyards, of the homes, and everything else, where you are here.
So, yeah, trail would be kind of down lower. The straight shot trail is probably right here, so we're up above that, still looking kind of down, angled down.
On the homes.
Yep, if we, let's see if we can kind of get a...
And so as you come down here...
Here's maybe a good perspective shot. So, you're probably 20 to 30 feet off the ground, looking angled down.
Towards the homes, okay. And then it drops off, so we keep going here.
Yep.
And now, we're coming up on Carville, right? Now, we're below?
Um, I would say that we're probably closer now to maybe about 15 feet off the ground, so...
So when you're saying below, we're below, you're...
The trail would be below the, below the sightline.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, yes, we're north.
So my point is, what can be seen from the backyard? So back, okay, so if we go back to Pittkins, we're actually, the trail is below...
Correct.
...the sightline of the backyards.
Yes.
Even back there by, and it drops here, we're almost at like, probably what, 30 feet?
Yes, correct.
I'm guessing, but that's what that looks...
Sorry about that. I wanted to make sure we were...
I didn't think we were above the...
Yeah, 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 sorry.
So the backyards won't, I mean, you could walk out your backyard and look down and see the, see the trail, it'll be visible.
If you, if the board's preference is to put the trail up here, kind of on this ridge, I think that there will be sections of the trail that would be visible.
Okay.
If the trail sits down here, through this section here, it will not be visible. I think as you go further to the east, it would be.
Okay, all right, keep going.
So, sorry about that.
No worries, yeah.
So, well, this'll actually give us a good shot.
Oh, yeah, nice.
Right here.
Okay. Okay.
So, Freco ditch easement.
Yep.
Back homes and trail areas here.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So about parallel.
Okay. And then, my other question, were, as you were kind of putting the landscape plans together, did you have conversations with residents?
We did.
Okay.
We did.
How did those go, and what did that look like?
I think they were generally pretty positive. You know, we were able to work with Terry Clark, who's here, who provided us with, you know, a recap from her neighbors. I think we all agreed that the idea was to use native material. We do have some invasive species in there in terms of a couple of Russian olives, but it went pretty well. I think the challenge for us is, was figuring out how to appropriately screen with plant material, but also be cognizant that that plant material at full growth also wouldn't negatively impact views in the future. And that was a bit of a challenge, and I think that that's where it kind of came into play, of actually being able to walk behind the homes and pick out view corridors and say, okay, will this work here? Will this work there? You know, could it be pine trees? Could it be cottonwood trees? But...
Well, and so we have, we have some public comment that was emailed in to us that just wants to almost triple the Colorado spruce and the other 30-foot tree, whatever that was.
The pine pyramid tree.
Yeah, and so...
Lumber pine.
If this was looked at, so my questions then come just from, what does that do to, I mean, you've probably read those, so you've probably thought about this. What does that do to this? And both from a view corridor standpoint, because I'm looking at it going, what, how do you put that many trees in and not negatively impact view corridors? And then, two, is that affect irrigation much, which isn't a big deal, that's just money, but, sort of a big deal, but it's money, it's not, but it could potentially change the plan. So how has that impacted, and what are your thoughts on that?
Right. So to answer the first question on the irrigation... Right. So to answer the first question, um, on the irrigation. This is a pretty robust irrigation system, knowing that we would want it to establish and establish right and establish early. So I don't, I'm not too worried from an irrigation standpoint. I think when you start to look at adding more trees, um, it is a little bit against what the original task was, which was preserving or creating an open space that looked like it did pre-development. This area was, was kind of largely open. It didn't have a lot of pine trees, if any. So I do think it would kind of change that, that look. You know, we were definitely going for something that looked consistent to other open space areas in town as well as Boulder County. And I do worry a little bit about the density. I, I think that it is tough when you're looking at plant material and you're considering people's views from the back of their houses. We have put in what we think is an appropriate amount of planting without overdoing it and negatively impacting anybody's view. So I, I would say that I, it's doable. It would be a completely different feel. I, I don't know that we probably classify it as open space. It would be kind of a treed screened, if you will. And that just, you know, in, in all honesty, that just wasn't where we started. We, we were definitely operating off of, um, creating an open space, uh, with, with minimal plant material. That also accomplished a goal of making sure that there was a buffer in between, if that makes sense. It was, it was a bit of a, a bit of a tricky task to figure out, how do you, how do you make open space, but add plants to it? To almost make it not an open space.
Sure.
So I, I would say it's doable. It would definitely be different than the direction we're moving it now.
Okay.
Is that the directive that you guys received from the town board in terms of coming at this from the standpoint of trying to recreate a bit of an open space?
Yeah. You know, way back in, in 2015, when we kind of first, um, took a shot at this, it was myself and Assistant Town Manager Martin Toth. The directive at that time was definitely to, to kind of get it back to what we were calling its pre-developed state, which was get it back to what it was. And what it was, was kind of this open area. And then it, it became, well, how do you do that? But accomplish this goal of, you've got these two developments. And I think we're all in agreement that it's great to have this kind of screen in the middle. It's two completely different fields. It's two completely different kind of uses and styles. So how do you do that without overdoing it? And then how do you do that without overdoing it and not impacting negatively people's views now or in the future? And that actually became quite a, a task to figure out.
Where are the home, what, can you just laser draw about where the street is that the residential's on in the town center side?
You know what? I might. Steven, do you have a?
I do.
Good handle.
Just roughly. Yeah.
So effectively, if, if this is the, the edge of that 200 feet, which Patrick's kind of indicating, uh, that's where that sidewalk would go or the trail would go if it was going straight.
Yep.
You got, this basically shows kind of where that road would be. There's, um, well, a proposed road. So on, on, yeah. It's not been abrooed or platted or anything like that. But the, conceptually, what the PD3 shows is a road here. And then, um, I think it's roughly like a 75 foot yard. 25 feet of that is non-developable. So they got 50 feet of what they can develop or put a house on or put a structure on. And then a 25 foot no build area and then that line. But it's, I mean, it, that's probably fairly accurate or pretty close.
Okay. Could I request just one more quick flyby?
Sure.
Just.
Yeah. You want me to keep going or back it up?
Just start from the beginning on 36, the way you first came.
Sure.
And it is fine. And just, if you don't mind, just one more, one more quick run through. I just want to look at it from a different perspective.
Yeah. And at any time holler and all.
So if you pause it there, the, the landscaping that's on that hill there now, how, how mature, how tall are those trees that run along? And are those private property? Are those part of the Rock, Rock Creek?
Are you talking about up here?
Uh, uh, bordering there, the homes. Yep. Yeah, up there. Yeah.
Um, it's a combination. The town actually, even, even behind some of those homes, the town does have, uh, areas of landscape that we maintain that actually, but to the homeowners. I would say most of what you're seeing here is.
Is mature.
Is mature and is, is kind of a combination of private. Some residents have done a great job landscaping and, and you can see others that have protected view corridors. So now the, the stuff that we're kind of looking at, that we would consider a little bit on the invasive side is this kind of stuff. Some of the Russian olive, some of the, the stuff along the drainage areas.
Can I ask a question really quick? Because if there was something, there was a huge mistake here. He said 200 feet. We've all been promised. It was 250 because the mayor and then we have this lawsuit going. And it was 225. He just said 200. Where is 200 coming out?
It's 225 to this edge. If I said, it's 225 to this edge for the tract of, and we said it during the presentation. The tract, tract H has been plotted at 225 feet. There's an additional 25 feet on the north side that's not developable to get up to the 220 feet that you're referring to.
So originally when we all bought our homes, we were promised we could go up there. Because the mayor and then 50 feet from.
You should approach the, but we should wait till we.
No, excuse me. You'll have a chance to do for public comment. Okay? We want to hear from staff and then we're going to ask questions. And you'll, you'll, you'll have a chance to, to comment. Okay?
Want me to keep it going?
Yeah. Yeah. Just let it finish. That's cool.
So we can kind of see some of, be facing some stuff along the tree line there.
Okay. Cool. That's all. Sorry.
Further questions for Patrick or Steven? I guess now that the issue's been raised, Patrick, can you comment at all on this 250 feet versus 200 feet versus 225?
Yeah. And Steven, maybe to kind of reiterate what you had mentioned just a second ago?
You mean a second or?
Yeah.
So effectively.
Do you want me to switch over?
No, this one's fine.
Okay.
Uh, what's getting plotted is a 225 foot wide tract, uh, east west. So it's 225 feet north, south, but it extends that whole east, west length. There's an additional 25 foot no build zone, uh, within the town center for any of the, anything that in the future gets plotted, along this edge essentially. But it was a part of the discussion at the plan development that, you know, there are different interpretations of what the, uh, annexation agreement, uh, intended. And so effectively that same no build area has been achieved, but it's been achieved by a 225 foot tract, plus a no build zone within the, uh, which will eventually be privately owned property.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Okay. Public comment.
I do have one other thing before we move on to that. That's okay. Um, we have a consultant here this evening. Would you be able to indulge me in terms of giving us a little bit of detail about the difficulties and that you faced coming up with, designing this plat?
Good evening. I'm Anthony Pratt, landscape architect with Lauris and Associates. Yeah. So we were tasked with, with designing a landscape irrigation and, and providing a conceptual design for the trail, um, moving forward. It's, it's an incredibly difficult, uh, task to, if you look at most open spaces in Boulder County or in the area, especially the further you get away from the foothills, the less, um, plantings that are higher in nature, more screening in nature. They, they just don't really exist. It's more open plains type, um, open space. As you can see on the eastern half of tract H, I mean, that is very typical, moving away from the foothills, open space. So we were tasked with trying to create an open space that doesn't, but that also has plantings that doesn't really feel like an open space for this area. So what we have done is we have chosen plants that are very native to the Colorado. They are not your typical plants that you're going to find in a park unless it's in a more open space untouched area. These are plants that are going to, can grow without little to no irrigation. As well as the seed mixes can grow with little to no irrigation. We were, uh, as Patrick said, him and I have gone through the areas trying to figure out, all right, if we put planted, this tall planting higher up on the bank, it's going to block these people's views. So we need to look at moving the taller plantings further down the bank, using shorter plantings up, um, on the bank. That's why you'll see some shrub, um, groupings on that southern border. That is to, to screen some of those low views out of, um, from certain areas. But maintain those far off views of the Flatirons and Long Peak for those residents. And then keeping those taller plantings further down, using massing of shrubs, trees and some ornamental grass. I say ornamental, but they're really a native grass that is just bigger in this case. So we use those kind of clumpings to help those plantings survive in an open space. Plants really like to be clumped in an open space. They, they thrive better that way. And so that was the, the general basis for this design.
And so you started off by saying it's kind of unusual to see 80 feet or 90 feet, uh, lodgepole pines growing in this area at this elevation.
It, it is, it is not typical of an open space, um, that is further from the foothills. And you can kind of see that especially, um, into the open spaces east, uh, I mean, I'm sorry, west of McCaslin. I'm trying to think of the names right off the top of my head and I'm, I'm blanking all of a sudden. But they're, they're very open with a few pines or spruces kind of in there, but not, not large amounts. Like this isn't a large amount, but this isn't a, a small amount of plantings either.
And so when you design this, you've taken into account, um, not to overcrow plant. So that as they mature, they have room to spread.
Correct. The, the planting sizing you are seeing on these plans are at our mature height and width. That's how, um, we like to design, I like to design definitely as a, as a landscape architect. I don't want to, um, put plantings in tight together that they don't, they have to be maintained when they start to grow and they grow into each other and start to kill each other off. So that's, um, we always show mature height and width. Or especially, well, in this case, when you're looking at it in 2D plan, it's mature width of plant.
Just a follow up question on that. So there was also interest in, uh, just planting larger trees, right? Getting, getting a bump on where we might ought to have been a while back. Is there any impact pros, cons to doing that? Do you care one way or the other? Does it impact your plan much?
I personally wouldn't care, but, uh, I'm assuming that the residents that would be right there would, would care. Because those, you start, the taller the tree.
They would want the larger. Right.
That would actually, I, I would think that they would not want the larger because you're starting to block your views of Long's Peak and Flatirons. The taller the tree you get in.
I got you.
I know in one of the discussions we had, um, there was talk of a, a site, um, view preservation study done, um, as part of this. And, and some of the trees that are even being shown here are, are getting close on that site preservation.
Yeah. And when I, and when I looked at that plan, just trying to look at that northwestern view, that, that was the first thing that came to mind for me is, you know, what, what groupings of trees are going to block whose view? I know it's probably 10 years out or if, I mean, if you're irrigating that, it's sooner rather than later, right? These, these things tend to grow a lot faster when they're irrigated. So, um, do you have a sense of, of what groupings might it start to impact views of longs that are, that are up there? Can you?
Yeah. Um, you know, I, some of these in this area, they're cottonwood. I mean, this kind of middle group.
Yeah.
Could be, I mean, there's some cottonwoods, there's some, uh, catalpa trees. They could be an issue, but I, they're, they're down further, so they, they shouldn't be an issue. If you start to move more of these pines and spruces up the bank, they're, they would be an issue.
So as they sit now, you're saying that probably, I mean.
It, it's going to be maybe 30 years down the road. It would, it could be an issue, but, um, it, it's been, well, it's been looked at to not be an issue.
Okay. All right.
Anthony, uh, one question for you. As, as a landscape architect, if, if you tripled the amount of trees, the, the pine and spruce, what, what in your opinion would that look like? What would that?
Um, if we're, if we're adding triple the amount of pine and spruce and we're still trying to preserve those far off views, we're pretty much going to be a solid line of evergreens on that northern side. But also keep in mind, this, um, there is future plans or being looked at of, of roadway connections. So we're, this FDP, we, we have minimal planting over here to not plant something that's just going to be ripped out because of future road connection. So that as that gets more developed, there could be more plantings that come with that road connection as well.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's Anderson down there, right? Is that what that is on that far end?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And, and really quickly, just to add to, to Anthony's point. So we actually have this project currently out for a, a construction bid. And we have, um, we have asked for individual pricing on trees. And, and we do have that flexibility to, um, you know, instead of a, a six foot, you know, and some of the clumpings start with an eight or a 10 foot. And we, we will have pricing, uh, for some of that, uh, that fluctuation, but it is doable.
Yeah. Okay. Thanks, Patrick. Now, public comment.
Hi. Thank you for your patience. Um, I'm Sonia Critten and I do back up to this. And I would invite all of you over anytime you want. Have coffee, look at my deck. There's a little bit of fantasy land going on here. The screening is not about our view of Long's Peak. I don't care if they're get, if they get to be 40 feet, it's not going to affect our views. The screening is to keep away the view of the tenements that are going to be built. 1,400 four-story apartment buildings. That's what we really don't want to see. We were promised when we bought our homes, a football field, 300 feet. Then the, the town staff, even though I have a master's degree in engineering, Terry has a, a PE. We were calling multiple times every day to the staff and saying, please listen to us. Can you walk across the street? They're ripping out the buffer zone. It's like a bomb hit over here. It's going within feet of our houses. You've ripped everything out, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars because they wouldn't listen. Finally, after my husband flew drones and we brought it to the trustees, the town staff finally said, well, maybe we'll walk across the street. Oh gee, what happened? It looks like a bomb hit it. Yes. So then many, many hundreds of thousands of dollars went into rebuilding this area. Because nobody listened. Because maybe I'm blonde, maybe Terry's blonde, but we're both engineers and we know what a topographical map looks like. I learned that when I was an army officer. Okay? I learned that when I was a second grade Girl Scout. We couldn't get one single person from this town to go across the street and listen. And it probably cost you guys a million bucks. Right? A month of digging out the dirt and a month of putting it back. What we're asking for now is for you to listen. The screening is not about Long's Peak. The screening is about the fact that we're going to be looking at 1,400 tenement type of very dense apartment buildings. That's what we need to be screened from. So those trees that you're talking about, that's not to screen Long's Peak or anything else. That needs to be as far north as possible. They need to be evergreens and that path needs to be as far north as possible. And keep in mind, because the mayor incorrectly signed something without reading it. Because staff put it in front of him because they can't read a topographical map that I could have read in second grade and allowed this to happen. We had to negotiate, quote unquote, negotiate and give the developer 25 feet he was not entitled to. And now you're asking for us, you've already come 25, you know, play football, right? How fair is it that 25 yards comes yours, your way with no, nothing for us? Absolutely nothing. We, we were, because the mayor made a mistake. And this is why we have a pending lawsuit against the town. Okay? Because you guys didn't listen. You had every opportunity to listen. You have an opportunity to listen now. Those trees need to be as far north as possible. They need to be a buffer and a screen, not about the mountains. Give me a break. Give me a break, they're so low. This is a buffer against, if, just drive through United Bank Center, right? Look at that. Look at those parking structures. Look at what you're actually proposing. That's what we need to screen against. So the path needs to be as far north as possible. The screen needs to be between us and that path, so people aren't looking up into our houses. We were promised a football field, you ripped us off, and it was because of incompetence on the staff's part, and it wasn't because we didn't try, it was because you didn't listen. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Critten. Anybody else?
I live at nine eight seven East Carville Place in Superior. And just on the question of topography, and I don't know, probably everybody's familiar with it, but the, the buffer, it goes, the lowest part of the buffer is on the west side and it rises up and go, and goes higher as you go east towards thirty-six. So like at East Carville, if I look straight out from my backyard, I'm looking uphill at the buffer. And my view towards Long's Peak and the, and the foothills and all of that is west and looking towards the downhill. But also Carville and the street and the homes are going downhill as opposed to where the buffer's going uphill. So we're, we're looking further, we're further, we're down and looking up to try to see. So I'm very sensitive to the placement of trees. I have a next door neighbor that's planted a tree that's pretty well wiped out the front range for me and just in the backyard next door to me. So when we, going back to the annexation agreement and the disc, this discussion of preventing, presenting a view corridor, that was all about preserving a view of the, of Long's Peak and the front range. And, you know, any trees on the north side run a risk of, you know, undoing any, any consideration of what the builder has to do with preserving the view corridor. So I'm very concerned. And if there's going to be any plantings of trees at the, anywhere in the open space, I would hope there'd be the same kind of analysis that sounded like Patrick was trying to do already of what the impact would be to views. And if, if you create a screen of the homes, of trees that are going to grow taller than the homes that were designed to protect the view corridor, obviously somebody's views are going to get interrupted and those are going to be to the east looking west. And so that's my concern. I, I appreciate the concerns of wanting to be blocked from the homes, but the original view corridor preservation and the original buffer was to protect a view of the, of the front range. And, and so I'd like, I'd just like to have that view considered. And I think, I don't want to get into a debate of what, what's more important to protect, but that, that was the original intent. And I think everybody living to the east would be concerned if all they saw was a wall of pine trees instead of front range.
Thank you, Mr. Sorrelli. Ms. Clark?
Am I last?
You may be.
I am Teresa Clark and I live on Wigan Street. This meeting right here is perhaps the best meeting that I've had in three years regarding the whole debacle of the buffer, because we're finally talking about the endpoint, which is a naturalized landscaped wildlife corridor. It is not an open space, it's a wildlife corridor. And it even says that, it stipulates that within ordinance ninety-eight zero seven, also known as the annexation agreement. That's one reason I'm thrilled to be here. Thank you. The other reason I'm thrilled to be here is because town staff did a phenomenal job in listening to residents about what we wanted and what our interpretation of the annexation agreement was, and incorporating that in their first pass of the landscaping plan. And to my knowledge, over the past three years, this is actually the first time that staff reached out to residents and said, come, yes, talk to us about what you want. So I, I want to applaud them and say thank you for that. So the rest of the conversation then becomes about two things. One is the number and the height of trees, and the second is the placement of the trail. So I'll start with the number and the height of the trees. I feel that it would do residents a great service if perhaps someone from the town staff could come out and actually put a post in the ground, you know, through, you know, certain amounts apart, so that residents where the backs of the houses are going to be, so that residents can actually see for themselves, because we don't have a lot of spatial thinkers, so that residents can actually see for themselves how high that thirty-five foot house is going to be and what view it's already going to block. Stated differently, you can in your imagination, look at the building that is going up right now. It is forty-nine feet tall. So, and four stories. So chop off the top story and move that all the way back to the two-hundred-and-fifty foot, and that's what residents are going to see. And I don't think they understand exactly how big that is and how much of their view of Long's Peak is gone. And I would like for them to have the option to say, oh gee, I would rather see a tree there than I would the back of this house that has lights and cars coming and going and things like that. So, and that's why I was asking, and other of my neighbors are asking for more trees planted farther north, because as an engineer, I am a spatial thinker. And this current plan is perfect in, in terms of the plants that it's using and the irrigation strategy that it's using. It just doesn't shield residents from enough of the town center development. So that's why we're asking for more trees. Now, secondly, regarding the place of, the placement of the trail. So there's an alternate plan that was listed on the town's website that I would like for you to disconsider. The alternate plan for the trail that moves it down, first of all, no resident was involved in the development of that alternative plan. Not one. Whereas with the original plan, residents were involved, and we were happy to be involved. So that's, that's kind of why I feel you shouldn't approve that with the trail location. And then, secondly, ordinance ninety-eight zero seven, the annexation agreement specifically states that the trail is to be located in the northern part, the, the no build setback of the buffer. So if you're to approve that alternate plan, then you're violating a town ordinance. And it's your job to make sure that all of our future plans and developments comply to town codes and to town ordinances. So on the one hand, I feel you shouldn't, shouldn't approve it because residents weren't involved in it. And then on the other hand, I feel you can't because it violates a town code. Now, there's good news in the shouldn't and the couldn't. And right here, I have the good news for you. You know how the developer and everybody has CAD and laser printers and everything? Well, we in Superior have Michaels and Lowe's. This is actually a two-scale model of twenty-five feet from the top to the bottom and sixty feet from one side to the next. Included in this is eight feet for the proposed trail section. And I put some little landscaping here just to, you know, give you some idea of what it would look like with the shrubs along the way. This model clearly indicates that there is ample space in that northern twenty-five feet to accommodate a lovely meandering eight-foot trail. It need not go into the wildlife corridor part of the buffer. And that's where it gets really touchy, because the wildlife corridor was mentioned because it was once a raptor habitat. It once had prairie dogs that fed the raptors. And to bring us back to the trees and the desire of more trees, the only way that we can restore that to a wildlife corridor is to provide the animals with more of a buffer from the STC as well. So my plea and my request of you today is to just kick the alternative plan to the curb. Residents don't want it, they weren't involved in the development of it, it violates a town ordinance, so I don't think it's so good. And just add some more trees further north and put the trail in the top twenty-five feet. See, it fits and it looks perfectly lovely. And, and, and we found this out just from Michaels and Coles, or Michaels and Lowe's. Do you guys have any questions for me?
I do, Ms. Clark, and forgive me if I'm having difficulty tracking, but, so you're, you're opposed to, you saw Mr. Hammer's presentation with the, the trail that was kind of on a straight line but lower down below the, the view corridor?
Mm-hmm.
Am I understanding you correctly that you were opposed to a plan that would call for that? Is that right?
Okay. If this, is this, this is Plan B. Oh, yeah, this is the alternate plan that we oppose. Because if you look at it closely, and I did the measurement, and this particular trail, it, it doesn't even cut through the northern twenty-five feet. There are parts of it where it barely intersects it, but this trail is majorly in the wildlife corridor part. And I think it's a bit of a disservice to everybody that was looking at the documents because the first plan that residents had, had, had input with and were excited to be involved, it, it just, it had a straight line within the twenty-five foot buffer. And then a couple of the trustees came back and said, well, we think it's prettier if it meanders. But what those trustees, they're spatially challenged as well, what they didn't realize is that it easily meanders in the top twenty-five feet and can be quite lovely right there. So residents would like more trees, for, more of the year-round evergreen trees further north, and to have your, please, just give us your assurances that this trail is going to be in the northern twenty-five feet.
And you're referring to the, this twenty-five foot strip that's immediately north of the two-hundred-and-twenty-five foot corridor? Is that correct?
Right, yeah. So this is the one that looks just a little bit deceiving, and I can't walk away. But so you see, you can easily see the boundary of the property, the dotted line, and then, then you see the trail that goes in underneath it. Well, what some of the trustees objected to is they didn't want it to be perfectly straight. And what I'm saying is, after having done the measurements, it doesn't have to be perfectly straight and it can stay in the northern twenty-five feet of the no setback buffer. So you don't, we don't even have to fiddle with it going into the wildlife corridor part of it. I'm, you know, you, the last time you guys had me here, you were full of questions and I was thrilled because it was more of a dialogue between us and I didn't feel like we were lecturing each other. I felt like we were neighbors talking about something. So if you have any more questions, I'm happy to-
I, and I, and I'm, so I, I have no issue with putting that trail as far away from your, and working to do that. That's, that's a non-issue for me. I don't know about the rest of the commission, but, I mean, if, if residents don't want that anywhere near them, I, that's, let's do our best to do that. I don't have a problem with that. But I am struggling a little bit with some of, I mean, I've been looking over this ordinance, and I was involved in this annexation agreement, I was on OSAC, I, I've looked at this thing and I, I know where the confusion is, I know where there are problems. And what happened over there, in my opinion, was a shame, my personal opinion, tearing that buffer out. But I'm, I'm reading the annexation agreement, I am struggling, I'm not seeing where it says where to put the trail, only that there would be a trail put in. Is that correct?
It said the possib, my remembrance, you've got it in front of you, but-
Yeah, and I was looking at it earlier today, just trying to make sure I-
It said the possibility of a trail, and it also said that the potential of the trail was have to have been addressed in the first FDP regarding the property.
Yeah, right.
And that actually happened in two thousand and thirteen when this property was adjoined to the Awita property, but the trail was never, nor the buffer were ever, they weren't discussed.
Okay, and so that may, and I don't know if that's where they talked about where on it, but, so I'm in support of, I mean, if the residents want it farther away-
Thank you.
That, I, I mean, I'll, I'll support that, but the, um-
If anybody else has a question, I forgot what my other question is, come back to me in a minute.
Can it be put, so, I'm a little confused. Sorry, I'm a little confused. So are we talking, Stephen, just to clarify, the two-hundred-and-twenty-five foot section and then twenty-five feet on top of that, and you're talking about putting this on that twenty-five foot no developments zone in the STC or no?
No. So what we're talking about-
That part got given away.
Okay.
So that's now the backyards or the, in this most west, western part, that's kind of like where slopes-
That's above the dotted, that's above the dotted line.
Yeah, it's where it slopes down and into the drainage swales that the developer wanted on our prop, town property instead of his future residence property.
So isn't, isn't the, this is where I'm confused, isn't the sidewalk as far north in the two-hundred-and-twenty-five foot zone as it can be right now?
Well-
That, that one is, what Ms. Clark is talking about is the alternative-
The alternative plan.
Uh, which shifts it down further to the south.
So looking at that, Stephen, where is the, the currently designed trail compared to that? Is it that line right there?
The currently designed trail is just off of this line by a handful of feet, probably six feet in order to maintain-
But then as it goes farther to the west, it gets even farther, even gets closer to the homes.
It gets as-
So what she's suggesting is, if you meandered right along the twenty, if you wanted to meander right along the, the far northern edge, like that whole meandering trail you have right there was just shoved up to the-
Correct. Right.
Yes.
To the line, you'd still have meandering. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes. And, and this was my evidence to say that it could-
Yeah, no, that's, it can be done. Got it, okay. I understand that.
I have one quick addition, and I, I forgot, I told Terry, this is my number one point, and I didn't bring it up.
Excuse me, what just stepped in the mic, sorry?
Okay, so-
No, I'll let her finish, but it's really important.
Well, we'll give you one more chance.
Do you have any more questions of me? I'm always happy to answer. Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Clark.
It's good to see you again.
Thanks. Ms. Critten?
So the main reason I came tonight is I wanted to ensure that you have a wonderful third-party surveyor who can come and actually stake out where that is, because that was part of the problem with the buffer zone before, is it was the developer's surveyor who was responsible for ripping out the buffer zone and then everybody having to put it back in. I think it will save everybody a lot of time and money, and I think that we will probably, if you don't do it, the citizens will. I think it's a really wonderful idea. I would urge you to have a, an independent surveyor, do basically an ILC as to where that two-twenty-five is from, and, and this is something that people get confused about. It's two-twenty-five from the back of the Freiko Ditch, right? Does everybody under, you know, everybody understands? So from the back of Rock Creek, there's fifty feet for the Freiko Ditch property. That needs to be absolutely secured. We do have people breaking into that area. That should not be a path. Nobody should ever be able to be along that. So from there, there's an additional two-twenty-five, and I would absolutely beg you to have an independent, you know, Flatirons, an independent repu- I would absolutely beg you to have an independent, you know, flatirons, an independent reputable contractor mark that 225 from the Freco ditch, which is 275 from our properties. And like I said, when I bought my property, it was 300 feet. It was supposed to be a football field. Thanks to the mayor, somehow or another, we gave away 25 feet to the developer. I wouldn't say thanks to the mayor, but thanks to his staff who told him to sign this.
Ms. Critton, you've already made that point.
But my point is, it's really important that you guys get an independent surveyor because you guys can do all this stuff, and if we get our own surveyor and it's wrong, it's going to be a problem. Then you have to rip it out again, just like you had to with the other.
Okay, thank you very much. I think that concludes the public comment section of the hearing. There's no further comment. Public hearing is closed. Comments from the board. Who wants to go first? Who owns the 25 feet on the north edge of the buffer zone? Who owns it? Yeah. Stephen, I think it's part of the development, isn't it?
What's the 25 feet on this side of it, the north side?
Yeah, on the north side of the buffer for the length of the tract H.
That's still in, so through this plat, or the two plats, the developer will be dedicating all of tract H to the town. They own everything north of tract H. They currently own the area within tract H now, but through the plat, they'll be dedicating it to the town, and the town will be responsible for controlling it in the future, maintenance and all that stuff, so.
The in tract H?
In tract H. North of that, that's develop, developable area for the future. But with that 25-foot, basically no-build zone being applied to the first 25 feet north of tract H.
So that's where Ms. Clark is proposing to put this trail?
No, she's saying the 25 feet just south of the northern boundary of tract H. So it's just a different 25-foot area, which is, I believe she's referencing a 200-foot wildlife corridor. So the 200-foot wildlife corridor would extend from the boundary with the Freco ditch easement, north 200 feet, and then you have 25 feet of area before you get to the northern boundary. And that's where she's hoping to contain that trail. And just to provide some context, and Patrick can correct me or confirm it, but I believe that two alternatives are, one, you know, derived by having, you know, both a straight concrete kind of alignment for the trail and having an alternative meandering alignment. The second reason that that meandering alignment isn't just against the northern edge of the, of tract H is because if we put any trail along the northern edge of tract H, the irrigation, like that's a swale right now, would have to be piped. And so it's really to give the board kind of two different options as far as cost go. You know, I think you can effectively move that trail to where Ms. Clark is showing it, but you're going to have the same kind of result in having to pipe all of that underground, the drainage in that area, which is historically and, you know, to date been surface drainage. So there's two kind of things that are influencing that design, just to give you guys the full context.
That leads into my question, which is cost for the two designs, the basic straight-line trail versus the meandering trail that we're looking at here, or that's been proposed by Ms. Clark.
Patrick, we better to answer that.
Yeah, Patrick Hammer, Town Staff. So the project's currently out for bid. We do have a closing date on the bid in time to hopefully bring a construction contract forward to the board on May 22. So we're getting those pricing, prices. I think that it really comes down to the cost difference between having to pipe the drainage that comes versus putting a trail where you don't have to provide a pipe. And we'll have those numbers. We just don't have those numbers accurately this evening until we can get the construction bids back in. But that's, that's what we're looking at, is the difference, a piped version versus an unpiped version for a portion.
Would you have an estimate at all, just kind of a rough guess in the difference and?
You know what, I, I think it's probably a little bit premature to tell until we get all of it back. I mean, we're seeing, especially on some of the concrete work, that the concrete pricing is up kind of 30% from where we thought it would be. So some of our initial kind of wags have been off, and we're just trying to react to what's going on, at least on the construction side with concrete. So I don't know that I'd be 100% comfortable even throwing a wag out. And then we would also need to look at running the calculations for what size pipe we would need. I think when we initially looked at it, there was talk that it maybe needed to be a 36-inch or even bigger. We started to look at, you know, are there ways to get that surface drainage into a smaller pipe, which would obviously make it a little bit cheaper. So when we, and if we were to get to that point, we would have to run a full analysis to make sure that we could, you know, fit the required drainage into the piping, convey it, and then put the trail on top.
Okay. I appreciate that. Other comments?
All right, if we're just talking, I guess. So, I mean, I think what we're sort of faced with is figuring out how to buffer. Like, is it, we're adding a buffer, I mean, and not to get in trouble with my neighbors, but, you know, this was prairie dog, raptor territory. I mean, there weren't big trees and, you know, woodlands in there. So, you know, following the annexation agreement, restoring it roughly to where it was, doesn't accomplish what needs to be accomplished for this area. It doesn't protect the, that edge of Rock Creek. And I think it's extremely important that we do that. I think it's very reasonable that we do that. I think we need to do this in context of, we're changing the way that strip of land was looked 15 or 18, 20 years ago, when OSAC looked at this back then. So, I mean, I'm up for landscaping this in such a way that it accomplishes the appropriate buffer. I'm deeply concerned about creating wall of trees and putting in that. I mean, I'm looking at this, I'm listening to Joe, I'm trying, and, you know, listening to landscape architects, looking at the positioning of these, of these trees, trying to be respectful of, you know, homes now having to look down on, these are like 1,400 housing units, right? And that's what you have, plus, plus, I mean, 1,400 housing units, plus, plus of downtown. There are view corridor requirements in the ordinance. Honestly, at this point in time, and not having been involved for a while, I'm not sure whether those view corridors are being honored. And maybe Stephen can talk to that a little bit, but that was, that is discussed in here. There are sightlines, and, I mean, a lot of that work has been done. I'd like some assurance that we're not causing a problem. And if we're going to increase the landscape, make sure we're not violating the ordinance in itself. Because, I mean, if we start putting in trees that are going to be 60-foot tall or lodgeable pines or even taller, nah, 60-ish, yeah, so 60-foot tall area, then, you know, are we impacting those sightlines that are, that are in this ordinance? Right? I mean, I think we need to tread thoughtfully. We do need to protect that area. I know if I were living there, looking down on a new downtown, I mean, they had no way of knowing what was going to be put down there. They, you know, we promised a buffer. I'm not going to speak to the, to the, to the width. I have thoughts from when I was back then, but that's being, that's being dealt with. But beyond that, that's always been private land there. It was always going to have something built someday, and we're here now, whether it was a downtown, whether it was residential area, whether it was offices, you know, everything's been thrown out for that area. So we're just having to deal with that now, and, yeah, I'll leave it at that.
Anyone else?
Well, it looks like the planning commission is being charged with making a determination on whether this fits criteria for the final development plan and not necessarily the design of this and what should be part of it and what shouldn't be a part of it. And I just want to make sure that I'm thinking about that clearly in terms of what we're being asked to do. Staff has put together a very good presentation. We've had a consultant that has come in and talked to us about the design, and based on what I've heard, it all fits with the final development plan for the development of that area. And it also meets criteria that are set forth by that final development plan. And that's what I need clarification on in terms of, that's what we're being asked to look at tonight. Would you agree with that?
I think that's right, Anthony. I think we, though, can certainly suggest in a motion or if we're going to make a recommendation, we can certainly suggest that the board consider some of the comments brought forward by the, by the neighbors in, you know, arriving at a final plan with, with the staff's assistance. It, I'll just kind of chime in on where I'm at with it. I, I'm with Commissioner McCool on placement of the trail. I don't see a reason not to place it as far north as possible. If there's some significant cost issue that we don't really know about yet, I suppose that's something that can be evaluated. But to my way of thinking, if it's a matter of running an underground drainage pipe so that that trail can be pushed out, you know, 20, 25 feet further, that's probably something that's worth doing. I'm sensitive to the issues that Mr. Sorelli pointed out, and I appreciate it, hearing his perspective as another property owner. I don't know how safe it is for us to assume that all property owners along that corridor want a wall of trees, even if that's what we were leaning toward doing. I mean, that said, I'm not opposed to putting in more trees. If we're, if we're in there planting, in any event, and if the view corridors can be preserved for those who would be impacted, I would be in favor of putting in as many trees as, as we could, as long as it doesn't disrupt the view corridors or some of the homes that would be at a lower elevation. And in terms of the height of the trees, I don't really see a reason not to go with taller trees. If we can, you know, put in a 10-foot tree or a 12-foot tree versus a 6-foot tree, then let's do it. I don't think that's a huge cost savings, one way or the other. Those are my two cents worth. But I do think it's hard to, I mean, I don't want to say it's hard, but we do have to be mindful of balancing all of the interests of all of the neighbors and try to arrive at something that is going to be best suited for everybody. You know, we hear, we hear your comments, and we want to try to make, make this right as best we can, but we also got to be mindful that not everybody along there is going to want exactly the same thing. So we got to kind of keep that dialogue. I really think it's very important that Patrick and Anthony have had ongoing dialogue with the neighbors in terms of tree placement and things of that nature. I think that's very important. I would say let's keep that up, even as this, this moves forward for board approval. I mean, it's going, it's going to fall to staff to execute. And I think in the execution stage, you got to be open to, maybe you move a tree here, maybe you put in an extra tree there, you know, to see what the neighboring property owners are really looking for. Those are my two cents worth. Anybody else have any additional comments?
Only what I have at this point in time is I prefer curvy to straight. I can't speak for some of the evidence that is in conflict, and I can't really, I can't resolve it in my own head.
Yeah, I think, I think I like curvy to straight too. And I don't have any problem moving it up as long as the cost isn't significantly greater. So I agree with everything. The point that I still can't wrap my head around is the view, you know, and whose responsibility, who's going to tell us, or the town, or the superior people, whose views are not impacted and what is in the original annexation agreement that talks about what views are protected? And who's doing, whose job is that? And who, and I don't, I can't figure that out from what we talked about.
And that's my issue. So respond, we have a responsibility to honor the code and the laws that have been set for this town, including an annexation agreement 20-plus years ago or 15 years ago. So that's part of the responsibility. This annexation agreement is still in place, and there's even legal issues around it as well. We probably don't want more, but the, the, so there, those rules are dictated, but I'm, I'd like some confidence that, from our staff, I guess that's where we would have to go to get that, that, that the view corridors that are being referred to in the annexation agreements are still being honored, I think is, that's my, and then one, one other quick response I would go on. And so with regards to more trees, larger trees, I'm fine with. If we, I mean, we want to put in eight foot's instead of six foot's, and that's what people want, that's fine. I'm struggling with the more trees, though. That's, that's making me nervous because, and I don't, I'm nervous about the commission just, I, well, I think, I think we're at the point now where this is, the rubber meets the road, right? Where we have a, we have a, a final development plan in front of us. We're going to make recommendations. That's going to move forward to the board. They're going to take those recommendations. They're going to get solidified. And yes, maybe there's some flexibility that staff has to, you know, if there's something in the way, and the tree has to move a few feet, they can do that. But if we're talking about increasing trees by 10, 20, 30, 50, or 100, or 200, or 300% even, I think in some questions, in some of the comments from, from the neighbors, I'm, I feel like we need to resolve that tonight as a committee, as a commission, and decide whether we're going to leave it as is or, yes, we agree, we'd like to add more trees. I think we said we want to add, you know, we're okay with bigger trees, or at least a couple of us have said that. But I think we need to get those figured out because this is, this is a final development plan that's going to move forward unless it just fails at the board level and everybody gets sent back to the drawing board, and then it's going to get implemented, right?
But if we're going to add, if we're going to, let's say we do that, and we say we're going to triple the number of trees, then no one has looked at those trees where they're being planted. So it's like we have to kick it back to the beginning to say, someone's got to put those, let's just assume we do triple the trees, they've got to put them in here, and now look at sightlines, and it's just almost like starting over.
I don't think we should get into the business of tree counting. I know, I think we should, we should look at it in terms of interfacing with neighbors and being open, allowing staff the flexibility to remain open to, you know, revisions to the plan as needed and appropriate based on what you're finding out there as you're planting. I mean, I, I think, you know, some of it's going to depend on drainage and topography and things of that nature. I don't know that we're capping the number of trees that you're able to put out there, or we're giving you some minimum number, but that's my understanding of what this plan is.
Can you answer that, Stephen? I mean, we have a final development plan in front of us with tree counts and positioning, how, where are, I mean, what's?
It's a good question.
What's our flexibility there?
It's a good question.
To me, we're going to have to kick it back to the design if we think there's.
So if you were going to do something substantial, I would think that, I mean, especially if you were going to try to increase the tree count by, you know, 300% or, you know, triple the amount of trees out here, if that was your objective, and, you know, it was consensus with the board, you certainly have the right to send it back, and, you know, we would revise the plan and bring it back to you before you actually make a recommendation on it. More to your last question, in terms of flexibility. I mean, I think you could work on a condition that allows a certain amount of flexibility for a certain percentage of additional trees. You know, you could even, you know, you can be as specific as you want, you know, within the northern, you know, third of the, of tract H or whatever. I guess I'd also just, you know, kind of clarify that, you know, in the larger context, the town is acquiring this tract, so we're going to have control of the property if we do need to come back for an FDP amendment to remove trees, add trees, anything like that in the future. That's our prerogative because that's our, our property, so.
So your point is that's relatively easily done if?
It's relatively easily done. You know, generally, the rule of thumb is, you know, it can even be done administratively if it's, you know, within 10% of what was originally approved. If it was, you know, something greater than that, it would come back for a hearing, so. Does that help?
I mean, I think, I mean, I'm comfortable there. I mean, I would like, did you know with the view corridors, as they were talked about in the ordinance, are, were we?
So, I mean, I can give you kind of some broader context of the view corridor, but Patrick would be more specific as to what was, how it was evaluated within the landscape design. So I can tell you the view corridor is kind of still in place, even the PD itself, but the PD, I mean, I think the PD is fairly quiet on landscaping. I don't know that, you know, the. I don't know that, you know, the intent of originally, like when the PD was established, that there's, I think we counted them at like 55 trees that were kind of shown conceptually within Track H in the PD. We have more than that now, but there was nothing specific on height of landscaping within the PD. The view corridor itself, you know, like even the height requirements as you move from the southern part of the town center to the north, so it's 32 feet, you know, kind of closer to the southern edge, and then you get into areas where you can have 55 feet, you go further north, you get up to 65, 70, and all the way to the hotel site is even taller. But, you know, so the view corridor is kind of like this triangular shape that is based on the Spicer Carlton Annexation, and extends kind of, I mean, to the northwest, so.
And it does appear that was more in the ordinance, that was with regards to building heights, more so than tree heights, but.
Correct.
I still think trying to honor that is, I mean, the idea was not to block the view, so.
Well, and I think that, I mean, in general, that was the goal of this landscape plan, so.
And I guess we can take out trees in 20 years if somebody complains, and there's a view getting blocked, right?
And to add to that, I mean, we actually did, you know, spend a little bit of time behind each one of those homes, and shot a lot of photos, and so, again, we tried to take that spirit of preserving the view corridor, and took that fairly seriously with the plant material, because I think that would be the last thing that we had intended to do, is to block anybody who's definitely a mountain viewer.
And I like what I'm seeing, and my concern is if we send it back and say, add more trees, then what are we doing? And what impact is that having? Is that sending you back to the drawing board to do your due diligence to ensure that?
I think it would be. I mean, I think if you're talking about, you know, in construction, we add 10 to 15 trees, or we look at planting a taller leader tree in some of this clumping, that stuff's fairly common. I think if we're talking about anything more than that, for Anthony and I to feel comfortable, we'd probably want to plug it in in a model similar to this, and then go out and visually see what those impacts would be, and make sure that we're not overlooking something or inadvertently putting a cottonwood that's going to shoot up, and then we're being tasked with taking it right back out a couple of years.
Okay.
And I guess the last bit of context for that, Patrick's kind of alluded to it a couple of times, is that, you know, we've actually sent stuff out for construction bids already, and that's because of the goal, one of the other directives is to try to get this, you know, landscaped and revegetated as soon as possible, you know, early part of the summer. That's part of the reason the irrigation, the robust irrigation system is designed, so those are all things that, you know, our staff is trying to balance as part of a objective here, is to get this going as quickly as possible.
And maybe something else that could be mentioned here, and this will kind of revert back to the trail, is, you know, we really are looking at this in terms of a phased construction project. In reality, the trail that we're showing, either option, isn't currently connecting to anything. We don't have anything to connect to on the Anderson side, we don't have anything to connect to right now to get it up to McCaslin. So the likelihood of that trail, maybe the trail needs more thorough discussion. I think that if we can continue to move forward on the landscaping piece of it, we felt comfortable putting it out to a bid, because we know there's some, there are some known quantities out there. We knew what the irrigation was going to have to look like, we know what the plant, the seed, we know which plants we wanted. So I do just want to make sure that everybody is aware of kind of the context of a little bit of the phasing, and then, you know, this trail piece of it, you know, if we get some, something going on the Anderson property, or something over on Discovery, maybe it comes in sooner rather than later. But I also, I don't really foresee us building kind of a trail to nowhere. We always kind of talk about the Calmonte project, you know, they put that concrete infrastructure in, and it sat, and we had to work over the last several years to take it out. And, you know, it was at the developer's cost, but we're still, you know, going in and babysitting and making sure that it's going in right. So I do want just to bring that to light, that, you know, we felt comfortable putting the construction documents out there. We definitely heard from the residents, there was a need to get this done this summer. We want to honor that, and we think that we're fairly close on the landscaping, and, you know, the trail maybe needs some discussion, or maybe a trail doesn't go in at all. I mean, when you look at this in terms of a whole, you have, and this is something that Loris and the landscapers brought to us from the get-go, is, you know, you may have some continuity that takes place in the town center, and this truly does become a passive recreation area that doesn't even have a trail in it. So I just want to kind of throw that out there in terms of where we're at with the construction and the phasing.
You're really just looking at, you want to get going on planting as soon as you can.
Patrick, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
I'm basically for trees, but what I'm hearing is that we have to draw the line somewhere, and how do we define where that line is, whether it's a 50% bump or whatever? What can you do graphically, or fly by, or whatever, that could give us an idea as to what hypothetically a 50% increase in the trees is, or 100%? To me, doubling, tripling it is going to be too much, and it's going to defeat what its original purpose was, or its original status was.
Yeah. I think we would go back to the drawing board with Anthony, and kind of visually just start to drop in different clumping. The other thing to keep in mind is that we've tried to, we've tried to clump grasses and shrubs with trees, so there'd probably be a bump in that, unless everybody got comfortable with kind of just the straight line of trees. Again, we were fairly deliberate in how things were clumped together, trying to create a screen, but not something that looked like a solid straight line. I mean, from a visual standpoint, we could definitely go in and start to drop, and then probably cross-reference that against what we were seeing out in the field to make sure.
I'm in complete agreement with this kind of a layout as opposed to a straight line, obviously. I'm just trying to get a visual idea as to what 40 more might look like, or whatever.
Yeah. I think it would be, I think it would be a change, I do. I think it would be a fairly, a fairly dramatic change. You know, something that I know that Anthony worked at awfully hard, and he had to kind of help me wrap my head around it, is, you know, if you were kind of to turn all these clumps side by side, and make them a little bit more linear, the goal was to provide a screen. And you can kind of visually see it, you know, it's kind of laid out that way. So our intention really was to, what we started to refer to as an appropriate level of screening, which was create a wall, but stagger the wall and stagger the heights, so it didn't feel like a wall. And that is a difficult task to do when you start to, you know, try to preserve, is this, what kind of corridor is it? Does it match what was existing, and factoring in all those variables?
Well, and to Stephen's point, if you get it all planted, and you step back and you look at it, and you realize, hey, we could have put a few more in over here, or maybe we shouldn't have put one in over there, there's really nothing preventing us from doing that, right?
No. We've added, just a quick kind of point of reference, we've added close to 20 additional trees at Wildflower Park, and a lot of that came afterwards, when we just kind of sat back and said, boy, that just didn't happen the way we thought it would. And then annually, you know, with the aging trees in Rock Creek, we actually yank out anywhere between 70 to 100, and plant close to 200 annually on plant material, so it is doable.
Chairman Sawtell, you took my two cents.
Sorry.
The plan, I'd like to echo Ms. Clark's comment, that this, the design of this, that Anthony and Patrick have done is fantastic. It's really beautiful. It's going to bring it back to a better place, this buffer area. I think the real issue that we're talking about here is the timing of getting this started and getting it done. You can always, like you just said, add more trees, take trees out, and move things around in the future. I hear the residents very clearly about creating a screen, and if those, whatever gets built on that end of the town center becomes as large as you were saying it is, then, you know, we can add more trees. So I think to get this thing off the ground, to get it going, so we can start planning now, so that we can have those projections we were talking about if we'd gotten this three years ago. So let's not delay it any further.
Thanks, Jerry.
I just have one more thing as well. I heard a suggestion about leaving the trail off altogether for right now. And for me, I like that idea, because what I'm having difficulty with is just having the trail be a sidewalk, a straight line, versus having what we're called a meandering trail, which is in 25 feet of space, which is going to give us much meandering either. And I think that just, also the cost, the difference that may be associated with that, for me, doesn't feel like it would provide enough meander for the additional cost. And then the possibility of just having those two tracks kind of meld into each other as it's developed, I kind of like that as well. For me, it feels like we're getting another park to some extent, with the way that this has been designed, and the way that it's set up. So my feeling is that maybe we move ahead and suggest leaving the trail off for now.
Yeah, I'll echo that. And as I said, you keep reading this annexation agreement, and every time you look at it, things just get a little more clear. I mean, the trail says that the annexer shall construct, it's the annexer, right? So that's SDC, right, now? Fair enough. They shall construct a pedestrian trail with a first FDP to access any part of the property within the natural area buffer, period. Doesn't say that, this doesn't say that some trail needs to be constructed through the property in the first FDP. So I agree, I'd say, let's recommend we leave it off, and see if it makes sense later, see if people care. That makes everybody happy, and that's bordering the property, and we don't have anywhere, like we're being told it does, you can't connect on either end, it doesn't, it's a trail to nowhere. So if they're required to put a connecting trail up to the buffer, then they can honor that and do it, and that trail ends at the, at the northern border, and they've satisfied the requirement in the annexation agreement. Is it, am I reading that right? Maybe our attorney can confirm that, or is that, are we, we have a responsibility to build a trail?
It's complicated.
Yeah, yeah.
In a lot of ways, the annexation agreement has been superseded.
Hillary, do you have your mic on? In a lot of ways, the annexation agreement has been superseded by subsequent agreements. The, I think the key piece of the annexation agreement that we continue to go back to is an initial clause, I don't have it in front of me, but it says that the property shall be developed according to the town and the developers' desires.
Yes, it does, yeah.
So that ends up being really the underlying requirement of that agreement.
Okay. If we make, if we pass this resolution recommending approval to the board, we're not necessarily binding the staff to starting work on a trail, though, right? I mean, this could be something that could be kicked down the road several years.
Correct. Even if this version is recommended for approval, that's, one, not a guarantee that the board doesn't do something different, and, two, does not set a timeline for when these things will be constructed.
And we can put in a condition that recommends we remove the trail. I mean, I think we have a few conditions, we want to put in bigger trees, we get a lot of head nods on potentially removing the trail. And I'm not sure where everybody is with more trees, but that'd probably be good to get a head nod on that, but whether we want to just leave it as is, and like you said, it can be modified next month, or, you know, in six months, if they look at it and step back and say, this isn't enough.
Well, to me, that's the key. I mean, I, these folks have put a lot of time and thought into developing a real nice landscape plan, and we all know from doing landscaping that you never really know what it's going to look like until you get it done. And if you get it done, and it's not quite what you were thinking we were going to have, you know, we step back and make changes, and talk with the neighbors, and see what can be done there. I think the fact that the town owns that, will own that strip, and can make those changes, should provide everybody some degree of comfort. That's my, those are my two cents. Phyllis?
Just going by what Patrick said, that he and Anthony with Loris looked at this, and looked at this, and looked at this, I'm not a landscape architect, I can't go out there and say, yeah, I want this many trees, because I don't know how it's going to look. So I want to leave it up to staff to try and figure out what the best solution is. If that means adding a few more trees, I'm okay with that. But have 100% more trees, I don't think I would want to go that far. And as far as the trail, I'm okay with either the straight or the meandering. Meandering looks great, but, you know, how many people are going to be out there? I mean, and whether we have to underground the swale, I think that needs to be taken into consideration.
That's true.
So those are just my comments.
How are you on no trail?
I'm okay with no trail.
Okay.
So we have conditions, what are?
Are we conditionally approving the concept of this, of the layout, in the sense that it's not a straight line, and there's going to be some movement and shifting back and forth with the trees and the planting, without commenting about?
I think we just approve it as is, as it sits.
I think that's the best way. I mean, we can certainly make our comments known.
Well, I think we add our recommendations, or conditions, whatever we call them, which were the increasing the size of the trees that are going in. I don't even know that we have to specify that it's 6 feet, 8 feet, 10, I mean, just, you know, let's put in larger trees, and.
Yeah, I think leaving that to staff's discretion, to work through what makes sense with input from the neighbors. And then with respect to the trail, it sounds like we're thinking, if there's a trail, it should be meandering, should be as far north as feasible, but.
I'm bold enough to say, let's just recommend no trail, it doesn't go in there.
Well, until there's a reason to have a trail, I guess, that would be my.
Maybe that's the way, maybe that's the way we should put it. Until there's a reason to have one, let's go ahead with the rest of it.
Does that make sense?
I like that, I like that word.
Okay. Who wants to tackle a motion?
One more thing, we also, I mean, we're doing the plat, too, here, we've been talking heavy on the landscape plan, but this is a final plat, as well as the landscape plan, and just, I assume we should just make sure, I'm okay, by looking at, over what I looked at, the plat, all looks fine.
Yeah, does anybody have any comments on the plat itself?
I'll take a stab.
All right.
I'll recommend to the board of trustees that we approve the resolution for Superior Town Center Final Plat and Final Development Plan for Track H, case number FP-2017-01, and FDP-2017-02, per the conditions, per the following conditions, one, prior to the consideration by the board of trustees, applicant shall make minor technical and red line corrections to plans as identified by town staff, that recommend to the town board that larger trees be installed, left to the discretion of town staff, to increase the size of the trees that are going in, and to eliminate the implementation of a trail across the property until such time as there's a way to connect it or a desire to have it.
Okay, we have a motion. Second?
Excuse me, real quick. It's Resolution Number PC-3.
Sorry, yeah, and, yeah. Prove Resolution Number, yeah, PC-3, Series 2017.
Okay, thanks, Phyllis. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Momart's, further discussion? All those in favor? Okay, motion's carried. Okay.
Thank you, all you guys.
Yeah, and I would just, and again, thanks for the opportunity to bring this forward. You know, we've been able to interact with you guys on Parks 1 and 2, and Eldorado Park, and now this, and I think with Terry still being in the room, you know, each one of those parks has been heavy on the community engagement, so, and it's great to kind of be able to continue that here. So we've fought for every little inch of park space in that, in that development, and I think we're getting there. So, thanks.
Thanks for your good work, Patrick.
Thanks, Patrick.
Okay. Okay, Stephen, staff announcements?
We're going to have a work session, I believe, at your guys' direction at the next meeting, and the work plan is going to town board next Monday for considerations, so I'll have an update on that, or you guys can follow that meeting next Monday and, and see what they say, and then we'll be able to make formal recommendations on any and all of those agenda items. And I believe you, we're going to have something as soon as the meeting on, is it the 18th, 16th?
That's right, I think we're...
16th, ready, right?
Yeah, I think we're hoping to bring forward a motion of some sort to...
Regarding the transportation.
Yeah, to deal with McCaslin, at least.
We're going to have a work session in a week?
Is that...
Two weeks.
Two weeks, everybody okay with that?
That was the direction, I guess, I understood from last meeting, so I just wanted to make sure that's the...
What did we decide about the walk-in?
It's going to be something I can invite folks to, we can have no more than five, right?
But are we going to do it...
Was it five?
Yeah, I don't know if we got that on the calendar yet.
We didn't, I've not, I, I said I would organize it, and I have not done that yet with injuries and various other things.
Still love to do it.
I'll make, I'll make that happen, I'll make that happen, maybe this, this weekend or next weekend, before the next meeting?
Before the next week, yeah.
Maybe I'll do two, and, you know, that'll allow a few of us to get together.
That way we don't have a quorum issue, and we can just do it.
Yeah.
That sounds great.
Is the weekend okay, like, you know, maybe, that way we might be able to have some residents who might be around, like Saturday?
Whatever you deem appropriate.
I don't get the number, I don't...
I believe that you can't have a quorum, so you can't have five, so it'd have to be four or fewer.
Less than five?
Yeah, exactly.
It's going to be four of us.
But we could post it, too, it's not hard to do, so...
If we post it, then...
It doesn't matter, you can have everybody.
Okay.
I guess, just send out some Google Calendar and see who's available when, and if you have to have two, we can probably do it without a quorum, and without posting it, and if you get it all together, and you can do it at the same time, we'll post it.
And how much notice for posting?
24 hours.
Oh, okay, that's easy, okay. Okay.
Cool.
Wouldn't expect a big crowd at that.
No, yeah.
Do you think about next weekend?
I'll propose this weekend and next weekend, is, is the following weekend better for you?
It is.
Anybody else?
Following weekend's better for me, too.
Anybody else?
Either's fine.
Sunday is Mother's Day, the 14th, so...
Saturday, Saturday, okay, though?
Good point, Phyllis.
Saturday, the 13th, tentatively, okay.
All right. All right, thanks, everyone.